Good morning, resuming twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five budget workshop meeting. We just called this meeting to order and can we please raise for a potential. Thank you. We basically left off grants miscellaneous and other funding reviews. This is basically what we put in for. You know. We pushed to try to get as many grants and funding out there that's possible. So, Mr. Bermez, would you just go through, please?
Sure. Good morning. First one is on page one twenty three and it's bulletproof vest grant for the police department. Any questions on that? On number one twenty four, we got the homeland security grant also for the police department. Number one twenty five, we got GOHS Governor's Office of Highway Safety DUI Task Force for ten thousand for the police department also. On page one twenty six, we got the police step grant, which is a traffic enforcement grant for one hundred eighty two thousand eight hundred also for the police department. On one twenty seven, we had the Tohoro Odom Contribution Grant for two hundred thousand, which we still need to apply for that one. But this is just spending authority. Last year, the police department received funding for bulletproof vests. I know that we put in for a walkway in the Middle Hills area, but we didn't get that one. So. I'm not sure what we're gonna put in. We're probably gonna defer it to the police department, Public Works, or the department that wants to put in for it. We have some options, but it needs to be in by mid-June. So that's where we're at right now.
And is that the max?
Two hundred thousand. Number one twenty eight, police materials and supplies. The same thing. You wanna go to one twenty nine?
On page one twenty nine, this is the miscellaneous funding. We always book four million in case any new grants come in that we did not know about or apply ahead of time. The other seven hundred and eighteen thousand is the rollover of the final ARPA that for the paving that has not been paved yet and also everything for downtown. So that's that four point seven.
Two million seventy three thousand nine point nine, is that the ones designated for the Morley Project?
The which amount, I'm sorry?
The two million seventy three thousand nine forty nine.
So, yes, that was the number that we had at the beginning of the twenty four year of the ARPA money that then you guys used the one point five million for paving and then the rest of it for the downtown. So if you look into the twenty twenty five, part of that four point seven million, the seven hundred and eighteen thousand four hundred and forty, that is everything left for downtown that the council has designated, plus the final part of the paving that has just not been paid yet that you designated towards Royal Road and Rancho Grande. But the four million is what we put in every year in case new grants come in and gives us the ability to apply for them. And if we are awarded them, then we have the spending authority to use them.
Jean?
Yes.
The grant that we got for communications, is that in here or is that gonna be divided in years or is it all a one lump sum?
Go into the next page, it's actually in the next page. So on page one thirty, the one that you just spoke about.
Right.
Is down on the bottom where you see the nine million dollar number. That is what's left of the one that we were awarded last year. And then if you look right above that, that fifteen million dollar number, which is a nice big number, PD has actually applied for quite a few other grants that we have built into the budget because we do not know yet if we are going to receive them. But we want the spending authority in case we do get those.
Continue.
On page one thirty one, these are new fire grants that they have applied for. There's two grants. One of them would actually provide us with six new employees. Then it's a three-year grant. It's very similar to what our cops grant was for PD, but it would be for fire. So there's two grants built into these fire numbers that we don't find out until after the beginning of the fiscal year. And then on one thirty two, that thirty five million dollar number is all of our grants that we either have been awarded already or waiting to see if we get awarded. So the thirty five million is our spending authority. One thirty three is our impound fees. We have our revenues and then on the our expenditures. Those are expenditures, I'm sorry. One thirty four is another police department one. Our PB has a lot. And then one thirty five is our JSEF, which is our court. And one thirty six is our municipal court. So they both go with our court system. One thirty seven is for library. This was a grant that they were awarded last year and they had to break out exactly what they wanted to purchase. And this is just the carry forward of what has not been purchased yet. One thirty eight is the SGIA, which is what covers the salaries of our Sonoyta part-time librarians. And one thirty nine is another police department one. It looks very small.
That's a big one.
It basically, it sits there and if there's any federal court cases, Mr. Berman is correct, it's federal. If there's any federal court cases that are awarded back to Nogales, then it would go into here. But we have to keep it open as an active account until that such happens. Page one forty is our miscellaneous for police. That is where we get the Mari Posa grants that come in. The White Elephant comes in. We usually use that one as our outreach like for Dare. And then one forty one is a carryover of a grant or a donation that the fire has received that is still sitting there for them to be used at any time. One forty two is for Parks and Recs. There's not a active one. It simply shows you the history of a couple of years ago when they did have a donation. One forty three is our E-rate for library services. It's money that comes in that they get to spend on basically supplies or other services that the library would need. One forty four is yet another police one. Through this one is where we usually purchase about two vehicles a year to keep our fleet, not two. Oh, this past year, we purchased two vehicles. And then we have our wildland fire on one forty five. This is reimbursable through the state whenever we have to send firefighters out to any wildland fires. This past year, we were very, very busy with sending people out to quite a few fires. One forty six is our Victims' Right Grant that goes in with our legal department. One forty seven is our CDBG, which is Juan is usually in charge of that one. And on one forty eight, it kind of gives you an idea of what that grant is gonna be used for. One forty nine is just our sewer development fees. When people pay the development fees, they go into here and then it can be used for anything that deals with those areas of where they've paid the development fees. And water development fees is on one fifty. And then WIPPA is on one fifty two. And that's the end of that section. It's basically just spending authority that we asked the council for, for all of that.
Jean, does every department write their own grants?
Yes.
On page one forty eight, it says forty thousand paid to CGO automatically. Is that an admin fee or what is that?
Mr. Getta? With the CDBG, the amount that we pay to CGO automatically, is that like an admin fee?
What CGO used to do for the city is administrate a project to comply with federal requirements. Like all the employees hired by the contractor needs to be paid fairly. So they take care of that and they also do the payment request to a department process and other things. Yes. And that is they charge about forty thousand for for project.
But Juan, when usually when you write a grant, you write in to get, you know, paid by that grant. So do they get paid that forty thousand dollars when they get the grant? That's how grants generally work. They write grants, but they write their salary into the grant? Or is that coming out of the city funds?
No, because sometimes they have to in advance prior to the grant or the grant award. They need to help us with the environmental review application and it's a going to be process that they help us prior to the.
Yeah, but who pays the forty thousand? The city or Nogales? That's what I mean, the grant. When you get the grant, you pay the forty thousand. Okay, thanks.
Okay. From there on, basically, we've covered the whole thing. You know, yesterday we dealt with some questions and I think they got some number for us, but you know, I think we gotta look at it as a whole, not as individually and and try to make the best decision.
So yesterday, the council had asked us to find four different scenarios when it came to the salary increases. The current one, which we built into this. I did not make, as soon as I read the numbers, I'll pass it to you. So built into the budget right now is the five percent for every single employee. Plus, if they have a year of service, if they're under the ten years, some of them will end up with six. That will cost the city approximately seven hundred and seventy thousand dollars. And that is already built into what we're looking at right now. Mr. Gredios had asked us if we would do the five percent and then go to the lowest person and figure out the percentage wise between their where they are and two thousand dollars. Figure out what that percentage is and then add it. So that was then added on top of the five percent across the board. That would cost us one million one hundred and twenty one thousand approximately. Then Ms. Montiel asked us if we could do a three thousand dollar raise across the board. If we did that, it would cost us one point one million dollars approximately. If we did a four thousand dollar across the board, it would cost us one point six million dollars. And if we did a five thousand dollar across the board, it would cost us two million dollars. Two million?
Five thousand.
Oh, five thousand.
So Jean, you said there was seven hundred and seventy thousand included in the budget for the raises?
Yes, so what you have in front of you right now under all payroll for every department is the five percent across the board. It's already built in here.
And that adds up to seven hundred and seventy thousand? Can't we divide that by three hundred and eighteen employees? And do it across the board? So everybody gets the same amount?
That's another, that is another possibility. So taking that. So instead of giving five percent to each person, just taking that seven seventy?
And divided by three eighteen.
Jean, Jean, if I may, just to go back to some numbers right now. On the first one is giving everybody their five percent.
Yes.
Plus, that was Dabel's suggestion. Plus, they get their 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 five percent across the board. But then anyone that got two thousand dollars or less gets an additional two thousand.
Sure. So we, he wanted to know if we gave everybody their five percent, whoever was the lowest, figure out what that percentage between what their five percent is and two thousand. And then we took that percentage and we added it on top to get everybody up whatever that additional.
So what's the cutoff?
Everybody got it. He wanted us to do it for everybody.
I wanted it both ways, because I also wanted to find out how much it would cost us just to get anybody under up to two.
Okay.
So two would be the least anybody would get.
The cutoff would be two thousand, right?
Because I wasn't expecting one point one million, but now we're giving everybody an additional one or two percent. So we're actually giving them a seven percent.
Okay.
With the one point one is the way I look at it. And then your numbers that you just threw out with the three thousand dollar across the board times three hundred and nineteen, my math is nine fifty seven. And yours is one point one million. Does that change because of EREs or what? Or are EREs included in the seven hundred and seventy thousand also?
So the EREs are included. Remember, this is just an estimated number. We just took what everybody's salaries were, where they currently are. And then, of course, there's the one percents that are built in.
Correct.
So you have to remember there that some, even though it'd be three thousand flat across the board, some employees still get one percent over that.
Okay.
So that's why the number is up a little bit higher than what your calculation might be.
Okay.
And then, of course, every day it all changes because we never know, new people, people leaving, people retiring.
So Jean, so the five, let me go over it.
Sure.
So the first was the five percent, all employees, and that includes the EREs?
Yes.
It does? Okay. So the second is the five percent plus the two thousand.
Well, the the percentage to get them up to two thousand.
The percentage to get them up to two, so they can get two thousand dollars.
Yes.
That's what I mean.
Yes, yes.
So they're two thousand dollars.
Yes.
Make it simple. Okay. And that costs how much?
One point one million. So it's one point one two one.
She figured one point one is including everybody else in that percentage. So whoever's getting five percent, they're not getting six.
Whatever that percentage would be.
Yeah.
So I wanted the both.
Cut it off. So then the second would be the two. Make it simple, two thousand. And, okay, that's something. And the third, of course, is three thousand across the board. One million, four thousand across the board, one point six, five thousand across the board. Two million.
Yes.
Of course, we could do, you know, we could do, you know, three, we could do two, three, four, five. It's like go on. Roll these numbers around. So can I? So before we start talking about numbers. Before we start talking about.
Numbers, I want to make something clear and a bit for it to be on the record because I want to make sure that that we're getting into a budget and we're approving the budget. We're spending millions of dollars and the manager has suggested that we give salary increases of five percent. And here we are giving ideas. Where's the audit of last year? Where's the audit? Where are we at? Where are we with the audit? I feel very uncomfortable talking about millions of dollars spending taxpayers' monies. And we don't have an audit from last year. We don't know, we don't know how we did last year. We don't have an audit. So I went and on the website, and I know you mentioned that it would be done May first and that there was some paperwork to be submitted for the GASP. Where are we with that? Because, you know, I'm uncomfortable with everything going on in the county, everything going on. I want to ensure the taxpayers of Nogales that we have an audit that's been conducted. We've reviewed the audit and now we're spending money for the next year. But we're spending money without having an audit. I don't know if I'm the only one that's asking about an audit, but I know in the public, there are people that are very well versed in in their finances. They take care of their finances. They make sure they spend their monies if they were their own pockets. Because that's how I see it. This is my money. Would I spend this money if it was my money? Would I go out and buy a car if it was my money? I mean, people are having a hard time. We're very, you know, underserved community. And so if I can go on and go on and, but I want to make sure as an elected official that we have an audit. We've seen the audit, we've reviewed the audit and that we're ready to spend millions of dollars of their taxpayers' money.
Absolutely. So the audit was conducted and it is actually in the printing and binding process this week. So we, in the next week or two, we should have all of our, the audits here. We had all of our stuff turned in with them in plenty of time. It sat with them for a little while. There's.
Who's there?
Clifton Larson. They're the auditors.
So it's their doing that they have not submitted everything? Yeah, it's on record to them.
Yes, absolutely.
When we make allegations like that, they will be listening to all this.
We've had conversations with them, yes.
Yeah, that's good. Let me know.
And then when we switched over attorneys, we had to provide the new attorney information and then they had to redo the attorney letter. So that just kind of, that was our final thing that we had to turn in. It's all done now. We've been waiting for them now at this point and on Monday, Monday or Tuesday, I talked to them. And it was, it's in the binding process.
Because last year was late too, if you remember. So it's the second year that it's late. Yeah, was was also their doing too for it to be late?
We lost our principal in the middle of the year last year. And we had, the principal is the auditor who runs the audit.
Yeah.
We lost ours in the middle of the year.
Okay. So it's it's the company that's not doing their part in submitting and so you're submitting everything and, okay. Just want to make sure because we don't have an audit.
Right, right.
I don't know if my council colleagues feel comfortable about not having an audit and making sure that, you know, everything is in place. With everything that's going on, I am cautious. Maybe I'm wrong, but I'm very cautious to.
I'm right there with you.
Spending millions on raises and buying cars and doing all that when we don't have an audit. I wanted to make sure that was on record. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Do you have something, Mr. Doyle?
No, just the Councilman Montiel say, well, at the end stated how the rest of us felt, but during a regular meeting, we discussed about having an audit. And I don't remember if we voted on it or not, but I remember kind of the general direction was that we needed an audit before, you know, we need to go further. So I assume that's why the audit's been, was done.
We do audits annually. We're required by the state to do them annually.
Is it always the same company?
It has been for the past eight or nine years, I want to say.
Yeah, because I remember the name.
They've been here, they've been around a while.
Okay, thank you.
Do what I ask.
Has the city received a preliminary in, a report from them or a verbal or anything like that?
So I received, it's kind of like a preliminary. There's no numbers attached to it. It's just kind of like a report. But we should have all the numbers, I'd say by next week.
Are there any concerning findings in that report?
No, not really.
We are looking at the numbers from what they provided.
Yeah, when it comes to the numbers, there's nothing in there.
And then my second question is, when do we need to come up with a tentative budget? What's our due date?
So for the tentative budget, there really isn't a due date. We usually present it to you guys on the first meeting of June. So then that gives us about three weeks before we set the final. Because we do have to have the numbers for the state in our newspaper for two weeks prior to the final. So if we don't feel as, if you don't feel as a council that you want to approve it on the June meeting, the first Wednesday of the month, that can be bumped back and then we just bump back the the final so we have the the required time in between.
Go ahead, Mr. Doyle.
When is the deadline for?
For the tentative, there's not a deadline. And you can actually start your budget year July one without a finalized budget. It can be done. In fact, years past, ours was done late. I prefer it to be done prior to July one because then I know we're starting the budget year with our budget in place.
But again, but we can still make changes though, even after, before the tentative.
Yes, yes.
I mean, not not add to the budget, but the changes can be made. So on that, I, well, I see you, we're talking about the pay raise. That means that there can be adjustments made before the tentative as far as the numbers go. I think that's what I, I think what I heard. So we have time to approve something that's and everybody's happy with. Is that correct?
And go ahead, Mr. Montiel.
Just because we don't have an audit. And even though you as a finance director saying that you feel, I don't know what word you use, but you feel okay that all the numbers are there. Well, you know, with everything going on, we heard that also, everything's going on and then, you know, things happen. I don't feel comfortable approving, it's not being approved today, but we're, you know, getting all the numbers together and all that without an audit. I'd rather, it's been done in the past. I went back last night and looked and it's been done in the past where we don't have to have it on the June agenda. We can, we can hold off. Or we could do it later on in June. It doesn't have to, I mean, I'd rather have the audit, take a look at it, make sure it's it's seen by the residents and ensuring the residents that there's an audit and it's been done. And it's complete and we're financially sound city. And I think it behooves every single one of us, at least me.
Absolutely.
Do you have something, Mr. Bermez?
Mr. Mayor, I can tell you that we strive for transparency and what we're looking at here is uh, if it's in the process of being put together, I see no reason why that, the audit cannot be presented in the first meeting of June, which is June sixth. As far as to the tentative, we can bump it up to uh, and have a second meeting in June to approve that tentative before the July first day. So that's not a problem either. And, and just to, just to let you know that I'm not, uh, I'm not happy with the results that we're getting from the audit. I wasn't happy last year and this year it's, it's even worse. So we're looking at um, probably changing companies because this is unacceptable. Uh, I mean, they've, they've had, we've had all this information in and last minute they're, they're requesting uh, documents from legal back and forth. And uh, that should have been done a long time ago. So I don't think this company is on the ball or, or probably the representative. I know that they were gonna change the representative or the auditor that was taking care of the city, uh, but I will continue to look into that because that's unacceptable in my book.
Go ahead, Mr. Bermeus.
Just for clarification, uh, we're talking about the delays, not the actual audit itself, correct?
Right, just the delays. Yeah, everything, everything has been in on time. Uh, finance has worked really hard, everything has been turned in. I know that uh, uh, legal sent uh, the uh, documentation that they were requested and then they came back for requesting more documentation. And, and that's fine, but the thing is the timeline is unacceptable. And, and so I'm gonna look into that and if we need to change companies, we are because um, this isn't something that I need to present to you guys in a timely fashion.
And I agree with Mr. Bermeus, you know, uh, remember, this is a workshop. This is a workshop to look at the numbers. Basically, it's uh, to think about it, yes, uh, I agree with Ms. Montiel, we could see the audit and see uh, if something comes up, up and about that changes our mind on certain items or, or projects. But uh, you know, the, the main focus of this is to, to do it right and, and uh, and have uh, you know, the correct numbers for every, every department and every, you know, for, basically for our community. Um, you know, go ahead, Mr. Montiel.
No, and, and Roy's right, I mean, well.
Oh, man. Well, i- it is better to bump it because we, if I understand, we have to make sure we let the voters know before we adopt or complete this, this budget, we have to let them know that there's no audit, the audit hasn't been completed. It's a statute, so we have to follow it. So I agree that we should move it forward. And first take care of the audit. We, we still can work on the numbers and have it all ready, but I think that's really important and I, I think that we serve our purpose as council members to the community.
And we also have to put it on the paper for, what, two weeks?
Yeah.
On two weeks, so it's, you know, it's not, not that we're gonna, you know, put aside or uh, keep the public and without knowing that it's, it's gonna be published, uh, you know, but before approval, it's gotta be two, two weeks in the paper. Mr. Bonilla?
Mr. Bermeus, um, any chance of getting that um, water rate and sewer um, study in also, uh, before we, we pass the uh, budget?
As far as to the actual, all the information is in. Uh, with uh, what's the company's name, Jean, Willdan? And so they're, they're, they're putting, they're, they're looking at the numbers and the projects and coming up with a, uh, the final product to present before council. Honestly, I don't think it'll be done uh, before, before the uh, budget is approved though.
Well, you know, I, I also, I also like Councilwoman Montiel, uh, I'm tad concerned because, you know, seeing the numbers yesterday, we came in barely with seventy thousand dollars to spare, so.
Right.
Um, um, I, I think that we need to see that, that, that study also. Because ag- again, we're, we're cutting it close, I think seventy thousand dollars. We need, I hope, hopefully can you give them a call and see where, where they're at, please?
Sure.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor?
Jean, what is the deadline for the final budget?
We want to have it by July first.
December first.
December first.
Do we actually have time? I don't want to do that, I would never want to have time. Yeah. If we have to push the final back into July, I'm not comfortable, but. Sorry. Um, we can start a budget year without the final done, knowing that the tentative is done. I don't like to push things back like that. I don't like, like, it, it's a, it's like your home budget, you don't want to start a year, you know, without knowing where you're at.
That's why we need an audit.
Exactly, exactly. So we do have time, so we can push the tentative back to push the final back so that we can wait for the audit.
And since we're, we're looking at salaries and stuff like that, you know, we cannot have any approval of salaries till the budget is confirmed. You know, so that's gonna retroact, you know, July, August, September, uh, till we get the final budget, so.
And Mayor, if I may, and, and unfortunately, you know, I, I just want to make sure, I mean, this should have been brought up before and I have asked for the budget, I mean, for the audit. But, you know, I, I just can't, my conscience can't, knowing everything that's going on, um, I don't want to do that to the residents of Nogales that they're surprises. You guaranteed right now that everything's fine, but I like things in writing and also I'm sure the company will have something to say, I'm sure. It's like, you know, anything, you know, everyone has two sides and then the truth, right? So we want to make sure what went really wrong, um, because it's two years in a, in a row, so we want to make sure that's, we're cleared. Okay?
Jean, you know, I know last year we, you know, they, they fell behind also, but was there any light bulbs um, that came out, out of the, of the budget? That concerns or anything?
No, I mean, not that when it comes to our numbers, the presenting of the numbers, our city actually runs quite clean.
Mr. Mayor, and you, and you guys, uh, the, the body got a, a report on the audit last year. So again, I'm gonna push to make sure that we get it by the end of uh, June. So hopefully we can put the final budget into play here uh, by July first.
So I'd say we. Any other questions? Uh, I think, you know, uh, pending that, that we get the budget to see it and we scheduled another, another meeting to talk about it and maybe try to see how, you know, which ways we're gonna go with, um, you know, projects and, and expenses and salaries and everything. And then uh, we come back, uh, you know, even if it's after the June first, you know, June fifth meeting. And try to see how, how close we are to finalizing this budget. You guys agree? Go ahead, Ms.
Thank you, Mayor. And what, just so that we won't waste our efforts today, um, or certainly we didn't waste our efforts yesterday, but I suggest that if it's all right with my colleagues here, for us to uh, go through what we talked about and kind of, I know that uh, Mr. Bonilla and, and some of you had concerns about some of the items there. Maybe we could go through all that, clean it up, if you will, and then we can kind of narrow it down to some of the expenses and concerns that we have.
Out of the, what we saw yesterday?
Yeah.
Well, bring them up. Which ones? Go ahead, Mr. Bermeus.
Before we, we move on to that and we're still on the salaries, I, I just want to make sure that moving forward, we make an equitable and informed decision that affects all our employees evenly. Because, just because the guy on the, on a service truck is getting two thousand dollars and the guy, an admin is making seven thousand, we gotta make sure it's equitable because yes, they're both valuable and they're both worth, uh, they're weight in gold to the city, but we gotta take into account that there are differences and there are other requirements. And the same token, we're working off of an old comp study that we shouldn't even be using, so an across-the-board uh, raise might be in uh, uh, feasibility this time because we're gonna get a new comp study and in the future it'll be more relevant. But we gotta think about what we can do now to make sure our employees are, all feel equitably uh, rewarded, not rewarded, but compensated and that we can move forward with a, with it, something that we all agree on that will benefit the city and the community because the happy employees will provide better service and that's what we want for our constituents. So it's something we gotta really think about. And yeah, numbers look maybe a million here, a million there, but if we do it the right way, we can break down that million and make it more equitable. A- at least that's the way I see it. Maybe we gotta start thinking pri- uh, private sector type of compensation. I know we're in the public sector, but right now, we're working on a broken system that we're waiting to get fixed, but let's take advantage and do the right thing now and work from there. We gotta set a foundation and if we do across the board, there's no, there's no uh.
Compression.
Compression, because everybody's getting the same, so it doesn't affect any compression for anybody and I think it might be a little more equitable. That's my two cents worth on that, but something to think about.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I, I agree with Councilman Grías, the only, and, and Councilwoman Montiel, uh, the only concern that I have at this point, uh, doing this or going about it this way, Councilman, is that um, is, I think that the question that we're, we're not asking, is it sustainable? I mean, it could look right now that it is, but in the, in the future. Cause anything can change from the state or how we get our revenues in. So um, my, my, my only concern is, is that, is it sustainable? Do, is it a good idea? Absolutely. But we need to sort of, and because we don't have a lot of information right now, um, I, I think that we need to be, move cautious and just make sure that it is sustainable. If it's a two or three or four or five thousand dollars, is it sustainable? Cause right now it could look like a good idea and we may have the money right now, but is it sustainable? Can we, can we sustain that, you know, next year, the, the next two years? You know, because what comes af- after, after we give the five thousand? What comes after that? Is it gonna be sustainable? So I think that we need to first ask that question, whatever we decide, is it sustainable? That's, that's my two cents.
Mr. Mayor, I can tell you that the budget that I prepared, that we prepared as, as a staff, um, at the five percent is sustainable. The entire budget that you're, have before you is sustainable. As far as to any changes that can be made, adjustments and or anything, I cannot guarantee. So I can guarantee a hundred percent that this budget is sustainable. Okay? Um, I will do the, the comp study because with the comp study, then we have current market value of every single employee. And then, so once we implement, and, and just because we get the comp study does not mean we need to implement the comp study. We can look it over and once we get the comp study, doesn't necessarily mean that everybody would get a raise with the next go-around. Because it all depends on the classification, it all depends on, on a lot of things, there's a lot of movement and then, and also depends on the money that we have. So I think this would take care of the problem right now, but uh, I need some more tools and a foundation to work off of. I cannot work on, on old numbers or old studies, uh, because that's not fair to the employee, it's not fair to you guys and it's not fair to me. So uh, I can tell you one hundred percent certain, with one hundred percent certainty that this is sustainable and that is the reason I put this, this uh, budget before you today, than yesterday.
Vice Mayor? Vice Mayor?
Mr. Bermeus, uh, where are we at on, on employee evaluations? Cause you know, every year we're giving them raises, but I haven't seen any evaluations.
You don't see the evaluations of Vice Mayor? That's an operational uh, portion of it, but I can guarantee you that those are happening.
Well, they are. Well, that's what I meant, I, I don't mean, you know, personally seeing every evaluation. Are they being done?
Yes, sir, they are.
Um, Mr. Bermeus, um, I, I looked at the numbers and I looked at, you know, the operating cost and the total budget. We, we are, I mean, we are getting monies from the contingency to balance the budget. So maybe, uh, maybe I'm wrong, but if, if I have to get money out of our savings to go and buy cars or go and buy, or go on vacation and I'm getting monies out of our, our savings, for me, I don't think that's sustainable. So we are, we are getting, we are tapping into our contingency to, to give these raises. What I'm saying is that, wait a minute, let's look at our audit, even though you guarantee it's, 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 it's good. I want to make sure that I have something in writing and that's why I asked you, give me the different, the different versions to look at them, because it's very easy to uh, opine here, but we, I go home and I look at the numbers, cause I'm not an expert, so you have the means there to look into the, the, the data. So give us the different versions that everybody suggested here in writing, so we can go back and, and do our due diligence, okay? I don't feel, because the sustainability is, is kind of, could be an opinion of, of somebody. I mean, I can say, yeah, you know, my finances are sustainable at home, but then my husband said, no, 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 they're not, can't go buy another bag, you can't do that. So for me, I spend the public's monies like if they were my own. And I don't feel comfortable tapping into the contingency to kind of give raises. I'm for raises, who isn't for raises? I'm, I, all, that guy that picked up my trash yesterday, I wish I could give him seven thousand five hundred salary increase. I hope I can give him my five, five thousand salary increase. I wish I could, I really wish I could, but we can't, we have to be sensible, we have to use common sense and we have to protect the interests of the community as a whole. So I don't, I trust this sustainable, I'm not arguing about it. I see it here, it is sustainable, sure, we can tap into the savings and, and, and pay our, our employees, they all deserve it, I don't think none of us here are arguing about that. What we're, what I'm wanting to do is see equality, let's see if it's, it's different from equal. Of course, a five percent is equal, but is it equitable? That's what I want to first address and then I want to see the numbers from the different versions here in writing, so I can go back and do my, my due diligence and uh, and then today move on to see what things, like the carpenter poll, he left me with something thinking last night, why would we want to spend all this money if it's not being used? I didn't know it was not being used. My, during my times, it was used, the school was using it, um, April, March and May. So now I found out new information that it's not. So why would we have the taxpayers pay all this money and it's not being used for what we're getting out of it? So there's, that's what I would like to accomplish today. Thanks.
Go ahead, Mr. Bermeus.
At this point, I would like to echo the same remarks and we should wait on making a decision on salaries at this point. Uh, we still got time, we don't need to rush into this. And if seven hundred and seventy thousand is equitable, uh, two thousand across the board would be just about the same or less. And we need to explore those avenues and see what we can come up with, that way we can make a better educated decision and not be rushed. I'm all for, uh, like I said, the five percent was a great plan. I also asked for that other plan and a third plan which was provided, which was one point one, which still might be a reasonable uh, option, but that way everybody gets to see all the options and we can make a, a more informed decision going forward. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
The only thing I ask from the body is to have an open mind because don't just focus on the bottom and the top. Look at the effect it would have on the people in, in the middle. Okay? So that, that have quite a bit of time with the city. So when you're talking about equitable and equity, uh, please look at that also.
Mr. Doh?
Yes, I, I guess the seven hundred and seventy is the actual cost of, over, across the board. Is that what?
Yes, sir.
A five percent across the board. And now we have to try to figure out, uh, as a council, what's equitable for everyone. And we're gonna be using that amount. So that's the amount that. So that's the amount that we'll, we'll go into the budget and down the line, we can still, I guess, fine tune it where, again, everybody will be happy with, with how the employees are being treated, the community and, and we're all doing, doing our due diligence. I guess this is like wrapping up the, this is what we're talking about. Are we gonna be provided anymore, uh, Councilman? Yeah, I stated that we'd like to see those numbers and also, uh, Councilman Gradias and Councilwoman Montiel and I think Councilman Nias. Can you give us an idea when we'll get those numbers, uh, to be able to, so we can start, again, like they said, doing our due diligence, looking at, giving it a closer look?
We'll happen to you this afternoon.
All right.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Mr. Mulas.
Thank you, George, just Mayor, George, just to, yeah, I don't know, it's Georgie to me. Um, so the seven thousand, uh, seven hundred and, uh, seven, seven, seven hundred and seventy, all numbered out. If, if, you know, I, I go back to that was, uh, idea here, one of them, just make sure that's on, um, in writing, the seven thousand, uh, seven hundred thousand dollars divided into three hundred and eighteen employees, I think, that's two thousand four hundred and thirteen to every employee. And you're talking about the middle, the middle quartile of employees. You're talking about the, 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 the bottom quartile and you're talking about the top quartile that has been getting the biggest chunk in the lap historically since that study. Okay? Because when we talk about the study, that's another whole day. That's why I want a study session on that study. Thank you. We'll move on.
Is there any other items that you guys wanna point out right now?
I wanna go, I wanna go back a little bit, uh, Mr. Ben Mulas, with the whole way carpenter swimming pool. I think it's way too much money that we're spending. Um, obviously Mayor, uh, Maldonado stated yesterday that it is another part of the city, I understand that. Uh, however, I think that the way the, the IGA is made as far as that pool, I, I think at, at this point, it's up to me. I, I really just would drain it and cover it up, but again, we need to be sensible a little bit or sensitive to people's needs. But I think, Mr. Mulas, that we should go back with the Nogales Unified School District and rework that, that IGA. As Councilman, uh, Councilwoman Montiel stated, you know, it's, uh, we only have access to it two months or three months and, uh, we're paying the full, we're paying everything. I, I know that we're not paying, uh, water and, and electricity, but just in maintenance, it's between five and seven thousand dollars. Am I correct, Mr. Ben Mulas? A month.
I don't think, I don't think those are the correct numbers, but I don't have it without having him in front of me.
Well, that's, that's the one that the report I, we got, remember from our former director. Or were those, were those off also?
I, I don't think, uh, those are the correct numbers. John, correct me if I'm wrong.
Right now.
Yeah, without having the numbers in, in front of us, I mean, it's kind of hard to do.
Cause we had to go back, we had to go back and rework it, uh, because there's some numbers that weren't correct in that, on that report. But, you know, we're looking at spending two hundred and some odd dollars to resurface that pool. And there's some other bigger issues in the city right now that we can divert that money.
Sure.
And, and obviously, like I said, um, I think that we should, we should, we've worked that IGA with, with the school district as far as, uh, who pays what, you know, and, uh, because they'll come back and say, well, we're not using it.
Right.
But then again, we can't use it when we want to. So which?
One of the things that we need to consider, uh, Councilman, is that just because it's adjacent to the footprint of the school does not mean that the school wants to take responsibility for it.
I understand that.
So I just, just word of caution, because if you wanna, I guess, adjust the IGA, they can also come back and say, well, we, we, we wanna adjust the IGAs for the parks as well. So.
There's no IGA in that one?
There's no IGA. And it's two thousand six hundred and sixteen a month.
So it's almost what, twenty-four thousand a year?
Thirty-one thousand.
Thirty-one thousand for, for just maintenance?
No, a year. Thirty-one thousand a year. And, and it makes sense, there's no IGA because the, the school doesn't use it. I mean, that's, that's what I'm saying. I think, I think we're, we're confusing the fact that just.
Well, I didn't know we didn't have an IGA. So, so again, Mr. Riddles, it's, it's one of those things now that we're doing the budget and, and it, it, it is curious that when I started as a councilman, um, I started questioning a lot of things, you know, and why, why are we paying this? Why are we paying that? Why are we paying fifty thousand dollars here, forty thousand dollars? And the response I've been, I've gotten in the past is, well, it's always been done that way. And it's, it is, it is interesting because those, those answers are mind boggling at the same time as like, well, why? Well, it's always been done that way. But I keep asking, why? Why has it always been, been done this way? So now we're going into the, we're in the budget and we're trying to figure it out. And I, I just see it as, as these little, I'm not, like these little financial leaks that we have in the city, uh, ten thousand here, thirty thousand dollars here. And if you add them up at the end of the day, you're talking millions of dollars that, that we're possibly just throwing away. Um, it's, I, I see like a, like a steak, you know, you have a big steak and you need to trim the, the, some, not all the fat, but some of it. And here we're not, we're not trimming off the fat. We're just going into another year and here we go, spending the same money and we're not stopping to say, wait a minute, let's just analyze this. I mean, do, do I, do I really want to, um, take away that pool? No, but we need to really study as what we can do as far as spending so much money on, on that pool and especially spending two hundred and thirty thousand dollars on resurfacing in that pool. It's, it's something just to think about and, and, you know, food for thought for Mayor and Council on, on that, on that project because, you know, for two months use every year, it's, uh, and I know it has to be done every 10, 12 years. I understand that and we need to replace the pumps and everything. Um, but again, that, we know, we own the parking lot and we owe the swimming pool. So, um, I, I, I don't, I don't know what to do, but other than let's, let's, uh, study that, study this, uh, issue and see what we can do and what we can come up with because, um, I'm not willing to spend all that money on, on, on that swimming pool.
Go ahead, Mr. Gradias.
I agree with Mr. Bonilla's concerns, but yet we gotta take into account, we own that pool, we own the liability that comes along with it, whether it's used one day a year, two months a year, regardless, resurfacing, changing the pump, those are all safety issues in my views. I may be wrong, but if we own that property, we have to maintain it. And yeah, it is a lot of money, but it's something that we need to decide as a council. Or are we gonna keep the pool or are we gonna get rid of the pool? But especially now that there is no IGA and it's only the city's pool, then it's something that we gotta look at down the road. But as far as maintaining it, it's our responsibility and it's a liability that we gotta take into account before we slash all this because if we don't do this and something happens in, in two months when they open the pool, it's gonna be a lot more than two hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, go ahead.
One of the things, and, and I echo, uh, Councilman Gradias's remarks because even if we, as, or you as a council decide to get rid of the pool somewhere, somehow to somebody, uh, it's gonna be harder to get rid of a dilapidated pool in this repair versus, uh, we need to update it because of liability purposes. Um, and then moving forward, then, then we can decide or you can decide what you wanna do with that, with that property as a whole. One of the other issues, Councilman Bonilla says, that I don't believe in it's always been done this way and I can guarantee you that you haven't gotten that answer from me. And have we trimmed fat? Yes, we have. And that's the reason why we doubled our contingency this year from seven million to fourteen million. So that's, that's where we're at right now. Again, I, I've been here for going on seven months. I'm still trying to figure out where we can cut the needs versus the wants, but I need you as a body to give me the opportunity and the tools to get this done with employees, with personnel. And so not only can we manage expectations of the public, but we need to exceed them. And that's, that's my purpose here, but I cannot do that in six or seven months.
I, I understand that, Mr. Riddles. I never said that, that answer came from you. I said that when I started as a councilman, um, I started asking a lot of questions because when you're a newbie, you wanna know how everything runs. And so, um, it's, it's been some of these issues that, that when you start as a councilman or, or, or mayor or whatever, um, you run into certain situations that you ask. It's a simple question, why is, why has it been done this way? I'm not accusing you of anything, um, you in particular, just administrations in, administration out, in the past, it doesn't really matter. Uh, it's just things that we just sort of see and don't see. We just accept it. Oh, okay. Oh, that's okay. That's what's, that's what's always been that way? Oh, okay. And that's, that's the answer that, that really gets my blood going. Or the other answer is, well, there's never been that political will. So, um, just one of those observations that you make as a, as a first term, uh, council member. No, no, was not meant to attack anyone or, or you in, in particular, Mr. Riddles. It's just an observation that I've made in the past four years that, that there's some little things, not a lot of things, but some little things that have caught my attention, you know?
Sure. And, and as far as to trimming fat, we get back to that. I'm still in the process of different options that we have, different ideas to bring in more money to the city. Uh, so that's still on, uh, in the working process.
Mr. Doh.
I kinda agree with, uh, Mr. Bonilla. It's, it's just that I think we're dragging our feet on that pool issue because I think he's brought this a couple of times before the, the council's attention and a few months, I think have gone by. And now it's almost an emergency that either we throw that money for liability's sake or come up with a better option, uh, whether we cover the pool and put a tennis court or whatever it is, uh, get some other use because what I've heard is that there's not much usage on that pool. Uh, so, you know, if you take the whole year into account, uh, we're really spending a lot of money, uh, you could call it even a white elephant with a lot of liability. And I think we need to take a real quick, close look at it before we throw any more money at it. That's, uh, and I'm hoping we can do that instead of waiting months to go by and we already spent another three hundred thousand, which is about almost thirty percent of, of all the requests here that, that are being made. Uh, I think that's, uh, that's a big expense object. It's right here. It's, it's, uh, you got a million sixty-six, uh, thousand two hundred and fifty and if we're spending close to three hundred thousand or maybe even when you put in the maintenance, you exceed it, uh, well, that's almost thirty percent of, you know, between twenty-five and thirty. I'm not a mathematician, but that's, that's a lot. And especially when the community is not getting really use out of it. Just a temporary time. So I don't know. It's something that we need to discuss and, and do it quickly before we start throwing more money at it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Doh. And I'll stick to my words. I think, uh, the, it's, it's a maintenance deal that we have to, that has to be done. It's, uh, it's something that gets done every 10, 12 years. It's not, it's not a every year thing, but you know, I think we need to look at maybe promoting the, the pool and, and using it, uh, in other ways, uh, maybe dig into that instead of the, taking it away from the kids. You know, I think it's, uh, you know, let's look how, how we could increase the usage of the pool. I know the, there's, there's a situation on the restrooms because, uh, during the, during the year, uh, we're not, the bathrooms in, in the gym or for the school are not available. So I think we look, we look at options, uh, how we could use that pool in, in a bigger way. But you know, taking it away from the kids, I think be, you know, I want you there in the gate, tell them next year it's gonna be closed.
Mayor, uh, just for comparison, I don't think we have any, we're not using the pool in Meadow, Meadow Hills. Uh, I mean, I don't know how much work that thing needs, but wouldn't it be more feasible to bring that, open it up again to the public and put our money on that than something that is not being used really by the community? It seems like the attention, you don't even have to try to encourage it. Right now with, with a golf course, uh, opening or at least, uh, the range, uh, I mean, we're gonna have a lot more people going out there. So that'll bring more kids to that area. So it's something to think about. I mean, but what I, all I'm saying is let's not throw a lot of money at it right now and then end up covering it up for whatever reasons. You know, let's make sure that, that we're looking ahead and we're taking consideration the use of it and again, how much money we're putting into it. If we need another pool, like I would think that the one that was in Meadow Hills ought to be upgraded and brought it back up to life. But again, that's just my opinion.
It's, it's in the thoughts to bring also back the Meadow Hills pool. Uh, we haven't, we haven't, uh, looked at numbers or anything on it, but I'm not sure if you've seen anything, Mr. Riddles.
No, no, we haven't actually, to be honest with you, I haven't. However, uh, like you say, we're looking into it. If, if, if anybody has gone to the pool lately, uh, my estimation is that it's probably gonna cost as much as building a new pool. It's badly in disrepair, however, it can be done. Uh, it can be done, but I, I think that would be another conversation that we're rearing away from the, from the, uh, uh, pool here that, uh, that we're talking about. But I, this, these monies are there for maintenance, solely for maintenance. That's it. However, it does not constitute an emergency right now because we're into pool season right now. So that would be done after pool season. Am I correct, David?
That is correct.
So we still have, doesn't mean just because we have the money does not mean we need to spend it, which is again, that's the reason we're talking about trimming fat. Uh, and just because we have it doesn't mean we need to spend it, which is the reason we doubled our contingency this year.
Thank you, sir. Go ahead, Mr. Montiel.
Yeah, so, so I'm looking at the numbers here. So it's two hundred and seventy-three thousand that we're looking into putting into the carpenter pool. My question is, do we know for sure who uses that pool? Like the school, I understand from your conversations, Allo, that the school's not using it? It used to. So the last few years, ya nada. They, they don't use it. So does a city have a summer program that uses the carpenter?
They do, they do. Mr. Mr. Rapesa, could you, uh, could you take a seat over here, please?
Good morning, David.
Basically, um, during the summertime, starting in June and July, it is used for swimming lessons and it's open to, uh, to the public from one to five. Um, the reason we use it for swimming lessons is because that's the only thing available to accommodate as many kids that we have in the summertime. So basically it is, we have to shut down early in July due to the fact that the school has to come in, redo their restrooms and so they kick us out of there. So we have to, so we have to rush the swimming lessons for about maybe a month and then we're kicked out of there because of the restroom situation to get them ready for August.
Go ahead, Mr. Montiel.
David, from my recollection, it's just a month they use.
Correct.
Yeah, it's like that.
It's only a month. That's all it is. And basically it's, it's, obviously it's the restroom situation.
It's the restroom situation. Exactly. Clean it up and get ready for the P program. So it's one month that they use the pool.
Yes.
And so the question today is, do we wanna invest two hun- uh, two, two hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars?
Obviously as a park and rec, we don't wanna take recreational activities away from the community, but eventually we have to look into how it's being used, how much is being used, how many kids are being used.
Yeah.
And what I've seen in the past years, the level and the amount of usage has pretty much gone down. It's not the way it used to be in the past. So everybody else is, you know, inside, it's like we're just talking, it's just how many kids do you see on a bike every day on our streets? It's very, very rare.
Yeah. And I agree with you because I saw firsthand, my mom lives down the street and then I was there for a long time. It's very limited.
It's very, very limited.
Sometimes you don't even get more than 10 kids swimming.
It's a handful.
That whole month.
And we have four or five lifeguards, maybe six.
Yeah.
Or two people, three kids.
Yeah. So since the buck stops. So since the buck stops with the council, you know, because the process, like going back, they recommend things to us. We make decisions.
Correct.
But if we don't make the right decisions, oh, you guys made the decisions.
Correct.
You guys made them. We recommended, but you guys made them. So in theory, it stops here. The buck stops here, you guys. And we have to make the right decision. And I saw firsthand how few kids use that pool. Very few kids.
Very, very few.
So it's up to us. It's up to us to see, do we want to invest public funds on that pool? Or do we just not want to do it and, you know, dump it out, dump out the water? And it hasn't, it's not like a new idea. You know, we had a pool and my husband just dumped all the water. I'm done. Filled it up.
It's just resembling.
And did just a basketball court for the kids.
Going back to the municipal pool. You know, it was very outdated. The tubing, the surfacing, the pumps, you know, it's very outdated. We have to get into the new. So basically, it just reminds me of the municipal pool we had over here on Madison.
Oh, where we grew up swimming?
When we had to knock it down because it was just too expensive to repair it.
There you go. Good example.
You know, so unfortunately, but you know, did we have any questions, concerns? No, everybody accepted it because we were building a brand-new pool at the Rec Center. Now, I've always said that in the past is, you know, if we're going to invest, why not invest on something like we can put an indoor, a bubble over the pool and we can use it all year long now that we have a heater?
Yeah.
You know, and we get rid of another pool, unfortunately. But is it a white elephant? It could be because what's a month of usage?
Yeah, if I may, Mayor. So, you know, sometimes decisions are made based on politics. And we all know that. That's why the buck stops with us. And the politics involved is, the district obviously doesn't care because they're, you know, they're not using it, from what I understand. They're not using it.
Yeah, they're not using it at all.
There's not going to be any politics involved that, you know, we're not working together or any of that sort of stuff. So do you reckon, what is your recommendation, not putting you in the spot?
No, no, absolutely. That's what I'm here. I mean, I hear from a lot of people in the community, you know? Is it an ice rink? Yes, it is. Is it hard to maintain? It is to get in and out of that area for us, you know? And basically, we do what is asked of us to do. And obviously, you just mentioned it's your decision to make, you know? But it's just really sad that we get all these complaints and so forth when there's only one or two kids swimming on one day and we have four or five lifeguards and then we have to shut down. So what do we want to do? Do we want to keep it open and spend the amount of money for maybe three or four swimmers a week? That's a decision that you all have to make. But if, like I say, if it's, we're going to spend money, let's spend it where there's real usage and we can get out of it. And that's, to me, it's the recreation center.
Well, if I may, one last comment. It's like we have enough white elephants in the room. You know, we have the bank, we have the old armory, we have, you know, we don't want that on the backs of the public, you know, to have all these expenses.
You know, I can use the 200 and some thousand dollars somewhere else and make it usable for our city. Yeah, there's plenty of.
Mr. Orpeza, would there be, you know, like, for example, let's try this summer, you know, that it's just around the corner, ways to promote the use of the pool?
It's always promoted. It's always promoted on the website, the city website. The pool is open from 1:00 to 5:00. Swimming lessons is from 8:00 to noon, Monday through Sunday. It's promoted. It's out there. It's been there for the past 30-some years.
The capacity of the swimming lessons and all that, it's always been to full capacity, right?
Absolutely. That's always, always. And that's the only usage that it gets in the mornings. Then in the afternoon, it's like a ghost town. But.
Mr. Gracias.
Mr. Orpeza, when was the last time that they resurfaced that pool, to your knowledge?
To my knowledge, over about 20 years.
That's the last time they did that. So based on that, what is your professional opinion as to whether it can go another year before we resurface it? Or is it in dire need right now that we need to take action? Because either way, we have to take some kind of actions. Whether we're going to close it at the end of this new swimming season, we still have an issue that we have.
Here's a scenario for Wade Copper Middle School. We used to have diving boards. We don't have diving boards anymore because it's against the law to have in city public pools unless it's a competitive swimming pool. My recommendations in the past and present, but it went in and went out through another year, is why carry a 12-foot-deep-end pool? It only costs more money because of the water and chemicals. My recommendation was in the past to raise it up, to make it lap-swimming, which we have a lot of lap-swimmers right now. Raise it up, easier to maintain, and we get usage in the evenings. The adults will come in, swim, and move out. But that's going to be a cost as well. Okay, so in the past, I understand the filtration, the skimmers and so forth. They're not functioning at this time the way they should. And they're going to have to dig in, put new tubing, so forth. So we can spend 200 and some thousand right now, but maybe once they dig in, we find another hiccup, another bump and saying, oh, my goodness, this is more than what we anticipated it was going to happen. So, you know, anything that has been there for quite some time, it's going to need a lot more.
So based on that, then, do you think we can forego maintenance for a year and not have any safety?
I would think we can just do what we can right now and continue to maintain it and make the best of it until you all decide what you all want to do with.
And you can use the resurfacing money for another project.
Absolutely.
That would go into effect immediately. If we can guarantee that is there is no safety issue and maintenance can be done, saving this amount of money, I would be in agreement to look somewhere else for another avenue. Down the road, if we do do this and spend this money and then we decide to close it down, then we just threw the money away.
That is correct.
Let's make a proper decision first and see what we can come up with. But if there are no safety issues or if we have to contact somebody, come and look at it, I think we need to do that. We can forego the maintenance one more year because there is lack of use. And it is the same concern Mr. Bonilla has. It's just an issue that we need to deal with, now or later, but we need to deal with it.
Mr. Orpeza, you were planning anyways, if we were to resurface that pool, we were going to do it after swimming season, right?
Yes, we would have to do that in August to start. And that's depending on the contractor that gets awarded the job to see when they can start. And then obviously, we have to look in the scenario of will it cause any interference with the PE class and kids coming in and out?
One of the, I actually like one of the ideas Councilman Doyle said. And I don't know the dimensions, maybe Councilman Gracias because he plays more wiffle ball. Is that too small of a space for wiffle ball, David?
It's the perfect place.
Wiffle, paddle ball, whatever.
Yeah, pickleball, you can probably put three courts in that area.
Oh, whatever. It just shows you how much I go play these sports.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
So there's a lot of ideas of what I'm listening to, right? And at the end of the day, like Ms. Montiel says, that's a legislative decision that you guys have to make. However, saying that does not mean that we need to take that out of our budget. We just won't spend it until you guys make a decision as far as to how do you want to go forward and give me direction and we'll get it done.
Well, I'm proposing that we give direction today. Because we, like you say, we've got to make decisions, right? And it all comes back to us. And since the person in charge, Mr. Orpeza suggests and he recommends, because I don't see any benefits. You know, we always have to see what we get for our money, right? I don't see any benefits having it that I've heard here in this conversation. And if David recommends that, we know, we don't do anything, we don't maintain it and we don't spend this money, then we don't work on it. We just take it off the budget. That's what my recommendation is.
Mr. Doe.
Again, if that money is left there and we decide not to use it, we could divert it for other purposes that would be beneficial to the community or the city.
Absolutely, Mr. Doe. So we leave it in there and we can move it around depending on the needs of the city as we go forward.
So, Mr. Ramonius, what will be the course of action if we will leave that money there? So if we would sort of, as Councilwoman Montiel says, we would direct Mr. Orpeza just to not go ahead with the maintenance for now?
Let me know what you guys want and I will direct Mr. Orpeza. But that money should stay there, but we can always move it around.
I understand that.
And yes, I'll get together with David and we'll go over what we need to do.
And just so that we could provide notice. So what I understand now is that we are not going to invest this money that's been allocated by the city manager for this coming year. But we are going to decide, once the budget is adopted, if that money is not going to be utilized. To inform David, the public, and inform, you know, the city school district, inform the neighbors that that pool will no longer be, is that correct? I mean, if we're not going to invest this money into it, that pool won't be used anymore? Or guide me with that.
Yeah, I think once the direction has been given by mayor and council to the Parks and Recreation Department, we can obviously put signs up, we can put notices on our social media, City of Nogales, and notify the public that as of this date, the pool will not be functioning due to X, Y, and Z.
Go ahead, Tal.
Go ahead.
Council members, I think we went off course here. I think that's an actionable item that we can take action on.
Yes, correct.
We just need to approve the money and we can later take action on where we want to direct it. And because it's not agendized, so we can't take notes.
Correct.
Well, Mayor, I disagree. We're deciding what's going to be on the agenda. And we're deciding what's going to be, I'm sorry, on the budget. So today, we're deciding what's going to be on the budget. So later on, after we get the salaries and everything approved, what will be there or not? So, yeah, I agree that we're just kind of deciding if we're going to.
We're putting the numbers in the book and then later on, we're going to come in and approve.
Well, I know that. That's the process. But today, are we not deciding if those funds, like Salo says, are going to be spent or not? Are we, as a body here, going to, it's very simple. We, as a body here, going to invest in the carpenter pool? That's my question.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
I don't think the decision here is going to be that, is that money is going to be spent on the pool? The decision here, if that's money going to be allocated for the possibility of upgrading that pool? Again, we don't need to do that if you decide that you don't need to. So we can always move that money around.
Yeah, no, I totally understand that. But then again, here, as a council, it seems like the consensus, we're not on a formal meeting here. We take action or it's not actionable. But we, as a council, it seems that we've decided we could just take an informal vote if we want to invest in the carpenter pool in the future. That's all I'm asking, so that we can kind of get some idea. The money can stay there. The money could be allocated there. Of course, you know, the ultimate decision will be ours. But today, we've got to have an idea if we're going to use those 200 and some thousand dollars to, obviously, it seems like we don't want to use that money. Is that correct?
Mr. Mayor, I can guarantee you I won't use that money. Again, we still have a couple of months before pool season starts and a couple of months afterwards to make a decision. My recommendation is that we put it on a regular agenda item or a study session for a council meeting so the decision can be made.
Thank you.
Mr. Doe.
Just to be clear, city manager, Ramonius, you keep saying we can move the money around. Will that be with council approval or, well, is it a decision that you make?
It can be, it can work both ways. However, if there is a need in public works, I would rather leave it in public. I mean, I'm sorry, in Parks and Rec. And that's when the communication and collaboration between the director or acting director and myself come into play. However, you will be notified as far as to what we're doing because that's my goal here.
I guess second part, that means that maybe the council wants to be more as a watchdog of how public monies are spent. We could put it in a future agenda item and discuss that in case with big amounts of money, I would feel more comfortable that the council has input also on where that, where those monies are going to be spent. So I guess that would probably be another future agenda item.
Mr. Doe, you have input 100%. I will not make a decision based on that amount unilaterally. And it would be, you would be informed as a body. And you would need to approve it as a body.
Thank you, Mr. Ramonius. But I'm thinking ahead on the thing that, say, when you retire and you're not here, a new city manager comes in and he's not going to honor that. He's going to take it on his own to do without the council's approval. So what I'm suggesting is that the council puts something on the agenda that every city manager has to follow unless it's changed by a future council.
One of the things that I will do, I will, next meeting, I will give you the responsibilities of the city manager and the responsibilities of the council, Mr. Doe, so we can just be clear on that. Again, this is not something that I would do without council approval. That's a big amount of money. What we're getting off here, I think we're getting off topic. The point is, I recommend that we leave that money in there. Doesn't mean we're going to spend it. So if we don't spend it, we can always carry it forward. And that's where our rainy fund or our contingency comes in. We can add those 200 and some thousand dollars into our contingency fund for next year.
Vice Mayor.
I'm glad that you recommend that the money stays at Parks and Recreation. I think it's only fair that that money stays there. And the other thing is, you know, like Mr. Orpeza says, pool season is only June. And we can't use this money anyways till after July. So, you know, regardless of what we do right now, we're just allocating the money. We can spend it before July.
Correct. Mr. Gracias.
Is it possible to just change it to maintenance and repair and just delete pool carpenter? And that'll solve the issue because the money is going to be there and then we designate what we want to use it for. So it's just a play on words, but I think.
Councilman Gracias, I can assure you that money is not going to be used. I'll give you my word 100%. That money will not be used.
For allocation purposes, we can leave it at, we have to decide even when they come back with the pool as a council, which bid we're going to take, if we're going to do it or not. So that's further down the road.
Absolutely. My recommendation, right. My recommendation is that you, like I said earlier, have a meeting, bring it up in a study session or regular council meeting. I would think a study session because it's going to take some time to discuss all the intricacies behind that and make a decision as far as to what you guys want to do with the pool. Give me direction, what you guys want to do with the pool and we'll get it done. Simple as that.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Orpeza. Any other items that you guys want to bring up? Go ahead, Vice Mayor.
Jean, did we include the Christmas bonus for the employees in this budget?
That is never included in the budget because that is always just a decision made by the council at some point. When you tell us amounts, that's when we go back and figure out how much it is. At that point, usually, we have enough within every department's payroll that it gets covered within there because we always have, you know, movement of employees, whether we have vacancies. We always, every year, it's stated by city manager that if need be, it could dip into the contingency. We've never, since I've been here, had to dip into the contingency for that. But it is not currently. But it is not currently, or, or hasn't been since I've been here, put into the budget because we do not know the amount that the council every year would want to do.
Mr. Mayor? So if the council decides that you want to give a Christmas bonus like you have historically every year, then I will come back and tell you if it's within our budget or if we need to dip into contingency. Either way, you'll be informed of that before it happens.
Any other questions? So plan is to get our audit, look, look at the numbers and come back maybe mid-June? That good?
Mayor?
Go ahead.
One more request. I don't know if it's from HR or finance, but can you also, when you bring us those numbers, can you bring us any effect of increases in their health insurance? Because if we move somebody up, give them a $2,000 raise, but yet they're going to end up paying a lot more in, in insurance, then it's possibly not, not effective. So if we could look at that too, because we need to weigh all that in too.
Councilman Gracias, you brought a really good point because we're not looking at, at all these moving parts, right? And the effect is going to, or the aftereffect is going to have on, on everybody else. Again, doing the, our due diligence, the budget that I'm putting in front of you is 100% solid. And, and I can guarantee you that it's transparent, it's in front of you, and that's where we're at. Once I do the comp study, then we'll come back and, and move people around where we need to be. Again, with that comp study does not necessarily mean that everybody's going to get another raise. Okay, we put people in the right way, in the right place, depending on their marketability and, and the study. At the end of the day, once we get the study back, the implementation is up to the body. It's not up to me. It's not up to anybody. The last, the way this, this last comp study was implemented is because it was voted on and it was approved and given direction by council. It's not something that was done administratively, again, unilaterally and in a vacuum. It was 100% transparent with the direction of the council.
Mayor?
Go ahead.
And that's exactly why the buck stops with us. Because the administration will go back and say, you made those decisions, and that's what I don't want to do anymore. Because it does stop with us. And faces change, the politics changes and all that, but the fact is that you, you have to vote your conscience. And before you decide on a comp study, I want to put it on the agenda to discuss the pros and the cons, and what company are you getting, what are, I know you said you can get the same company, so I have a couple of questions before we spend the money on hiring this company again. So if we can have it placed on the agenda for the future. Okay?
Sounds good. Just send me the, your request and we'll put it on the agenda.
I would like to include a timeframe on, on the completion of a comp study because at last time, it took two to three years. This one will probably take one to one and a half. So this decision this year would have no consequence on the comp study, but going forward, it will. So we need a timeframe also so that we can make that decision.
True. Go ahead.
Well, we're dealing with a budget, so I do have questions. So what we're, just to get it, make sure that everything that is here proposed by the city manager, we, we have the questions about the salaries and so forth. And we're going to get that information, which is great. And then also, there's other little items on there, and that won't be approved until we get on the dais and we approve the final budget. So there's still little things that can.
We're going to come back, we're going to come back and look at it either the 13th, 14th, or the 27th and 28th. Depends when we're, everybody's ready.
What?
Of June.
Look at your calendar, Mr. Doyle.
For me, the later part of the month, sorry. The later part of the month would work, would work well.
Month what?
Of June. That's, that's when my season ends, but.
The later part of the month for me is the hardest because I start, starting the 24th.
17th through the 21st will be available.
I'm not including that week.
Okay. So right after that would be great for me.
Me too. Me too. Available the last week.
But we'll, we'll, you know, getting our information and make sure we have enough time to see it, we'll determine what, you know, if it's either the 13th, 14th, or the 27th, 28th.
No, Mayor, I, I'm out the, I think I told you in writing that I'm out that, that those, the first two weeks of June. I'm out. And then you guys are going, I think, to the conference on the week of the 17th, so the 24th is available.
You're back on the 12th, you said.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah, and then I'm leaving, I'm leaving the 13th and 14th back.
Again?
Yeah.
Well, we'll see how we work it. But let's get our information first and, and then plan ahead. Anybody else? Any other questions? So we hold till we get our information and, and then do our follow-up work study on, on the budget. Either the, well, just Montiel won't be here, so we'll shoot for the 27th, 28th. Okay? I move to adjourn this meeting?
Thank you.
Out of paper?
Jean and Sergio and all the directors, thank you.